We'll find out what. I just got it fired up. We're recording it again. Okay. Next item, Clearview Estates subdivision amendment. The applicant proposes to modify the subdivision plan for Clearview Estates, section number three, which was approved by the planning board on April 1st, 1981. Specifically, the applicant seeks to modify the plan by replacing the cul-de-sac located on lot 1414 and identified as Laura Loop on the plan with a road and Hammerhead turnaround. He is seeking this amendment to resolve underlying issues regarding the location and construction of Laura Loop caused by the subdivision's original developer and the lack of compliance with a consent decree. Michael Thomas is the parcel owner and applicant. The parcel is located at 189 Clearview Drive on Tax Map 17, Lot 1414 in the R1 zone. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Thomas or his agent?
You chair.
Yeah, Marty.
I just say negative on that, the one I stated before. Before we even go any further.
It was something.
Yeah, yeah. This, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I, I do have an email from the town's attorney indicating that from her perspective, there's no outstanding legal issues with respect to this particular application. And I mean, I'd be happy to provide that to the board. Um, I, I don't think.
Yeah, if you could let the town planner have that, that would be great.
Do that, I think I can forward it to her.
I know that. Yeah, Marty.
We heard that last time, that was supposed to be done, and it wasn't done.
He's, he has some, he has some current communication with the town attorney that he is going to give to the town planner.
Was supposed to be done, other than issue on the whole subdivision and changing things.
Oh. No, 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 that's quite okay. Yeah, I know that we don't have anything from, from a year ago. Okay, and, and you have that right.
Sorry, what's.
Paul, the chair, I've got a few comments, few questions, I should say, not comments. So guys, you heard a lot of the comments tonight here, right? I guess, uh, a couple of them that I do have concerns with is, is the location of the road. Okay, being right up against the property line. And is there any leeway is to be able to move that away from the property line some? Because I know when I talked to Michael, when we were doing a sidewalk, we talked about the trees and stuff. And if that center of the road was 25 feet off or was 12 feet off, I'm not sure which one it was, but those trees are gone and their privacy is completely wiped out.
So we do have the engineer here, Andy Morrell of BH2M. Uh, and he can speak a little bit more about the, the reason the road's designed the way it was. Um, from our perspective, it, the more you move it off the property line.
Yep.
The more property has to be conveyed to the town, the smaller Mr. Thomas's lot gets. And then you get closer to, you know, minimum lot size issues and things like that.
That's why I'm asking, is, is there some leeway to move it and still keep everybody legal? I don't want him illegal either, okay? But if there's some way that you can work with the neighborhood, that, and what I'm getting at is, uh, if you look at the neighborhood, right? It's not an in-town lot where houses are right up against each other, okay? They've got certain sized lots, you've got some privacy, you've got trees in between. People built there for a reason and bought there for a reason. And I'm just trying to keep that same neighborhood feel to it, is what I'm looking at. If there's some leeway, I think you ought to look at it. I mean, there hasn't been anything dug up yet. Now's the time to do it, because once you put shovels in the ground, it's a little too late. And I know I just went through it at my house, so. That's just one question.
So I think the problem that you encounter is the more you shift it down away from the property line, the more you have to move the curve entering into the cul-de-sac and then going out. So you'd be moving what currently is a portion of the existing established right-of-way. So you'd need additional action by the town, I think, to actually authorize moving it further away from the property line or like jogging it down. So that's the way, it's been designed this way to preserve as much of the existing right-of-way as possible and not necessitate any additional laying out or discontinuance of the existing right-of-way. But I'll let, I mean, I can invite Andy to come up and speak to it. He can also speak, I think, to some of the stormwater concerns that were raised earlier.
That was the only question.
Probably in a way that's much more convincing than I can. And then I'm going to talk to Sam just to get her email address.
Okay, good evening, Andy Morrell from BH2M. So right now, the way the road's designed, the center line of the road is in the center line of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, not right up. Andy, we're gonna use that one, this, that one projects out to the hall. Okay, thank you.
You guys hear me now? Uh, Andy Morrell from BH2M. Um, so right now, the road is designed to the town standards. Center line of the road is the center line of the right-of-way. There's some wiggle room there to be able to shift the road within the right-of-way. If that's something that the planning board would be willing to consider, I think we certainly could position the road within the right-of-way, so maybe it's not in the center of the right-of-way, but it's kind of shifted to one side away from that of butter. I think that would be a, a good approach to this, but I'll be curious what the, the board's thoughts were on that.
Can we do it?
I, I think that's perfectly allowable and I think it'll help. You have four feet on either side of the pavement to play with. You, you could, I think, I, I don't think we'd object to, to go on 10 feet one way or the other. I mean.
Well, we understand that. Everything has to go back to the selectmen and then go vote it on. But whether or not it meets the, the zone.
Yeah, I think.
You looking it up, Pritch?
I didn't. I'm trying to look it up, I'm not having any luck.
Well, we'll look at that, but that sounds like a reasonable call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thi- I think if it's, if it's possible to move the road, I would say to the left, but I could be looking at it from the wrong direction, but if it's possible to move it over, is my output. Yes. Terry will have the answer for us.
Well, I was just wondering, Terry Merrill, if you move that, you shift that out of the center of the right-of-way, are you going to have enough room to get all the drainage down the side that you?
For sure, okay?
And you guys are going to address the stormwater?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, Andy, if you could.
Uh, so stormwater, so as, I don't know if you guys have talked about this already, and I apologize I was late to the meeting, but, um, we are reducing the impervious area by just under 1,000 square feet. So as a result of this project, you're going to see less stormwater on the parcel. So, um, what we've proposed is a road that meets the town standards with ditches on both sides, uh, conveying the stormwater to, uh, the lower spots of the site. So I think you're going to see a drastic improvement from a stormwater point of view to what's out there today, to what's, what's on the design plan.
Who's still? Andy, did you see the picture that they were circulating earlier?
I did not, no.
Your butter?
I did not.
I mean, but we don't.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, sorry, uh, BH2M.
Do you think that'll take care of it?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Anything else by the board? I am wondering about moving the, the road, the, the center line over to, just so that it'll, it'll give the neighbor more of a buffer.
The whole road could be moved over, but, and it would leave a, a little strip of no man's land on the other side, which belonged to with Thomas property or with the other property.
Well, it would actually belong to, to Mr. Thomas, because it would be his, it, right now, it's, it's his land, we're just looking into the idea of possibly moving the road a little bit further to the, is it west from that direction?
It would, it would be to the west, yes. So I, so I think, I think rather than maintain, rather than, you know, at this late stage now where we've got the plan presented and drawn up and everything, rather than jogging the road, I, I think we'd be open to a condition to either maintain or replant a, a vegetated buffer in that area, um, as it currently is to provide some of that break between the, you know, the paved edge of the road and the, and the, um, a budding property. But I think, you know, if we have to go ahead and adjust the plan and come back, we, we want to avoid delay as much as possible, but we'd, we'd endeavor to maintain as much of the existing trees as are currently there. Obviously, Mr. Thomas doesn't want, you know, the, a barren landscape either, or to, you know, replant an adequate buffer, um, at the, at the board's discretion or something like that. That would be a condition that I think would resolve the issue without requiring any plan amendments.
Yeah, I think, um, the, the probably most affected would, would be the gentleman who spoke earlier. Though some of those trees are 50, 60 feet tall, so which it's hard to replace them.
Yeah.
So any way that could be, I think it is, as a gesture more than anything to, to make it more acceptable for that property owner.
Well, I thought, I thought Andy said you didn't have to shift the right-of-way, you just shifted the paved area over 10 feet, and you still maintain the same right-of-way. That would be, that would allow you to leave the tree where they are.
Right.
So you'd have to, you'd jog the center line over.
Yeah.
But because of the road standards, Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, the right-of-way itself would also have to be moved, so like the paved center line would.
He's saying now.
Be good.
We can approve it.
Right.
Jogged over, not have to change the right-of-way.
The pavement doesn't have to be centered on the center line.
Oh, still a center line, all we're doing is shifting the area this way a little bit. Okay, so this is center line, it's the end of the right-of-way.
So let's read it five days.
So I think, I mean, if Andy thinks we can do it, then I'm going to defer to his expertise on the ability to jog it easily. Um, so I think we'd be open to a conditional approval, uh, moving the paved area of the roadway down five feet, five feet. And that would, I mean, it wouldn't modify the area of the road or the right-of-way, it would just modify basically, it would drop the paved segment highlighted in gray down five feet from where it currently is.
Still maintain whatever.
And still maintain, you know, whatever the, the existing buffer is.
And if any of the trees or whatever had to come down, you guys would replace the buffer? Like trees and.
Well, I think the goal by moving it five feet down is that many fewer of those trees would need to be taken down.
Yeah, but, but they could still, there's going to be one or two that are going to come down, you know that.
But do you want all of them, I mean, do you want all of them replaced or?
No.
Just the one, like, as many as possible along the way?
The issue is you're putting a road right on the guy's property boundary line, right?
Right.
You're in a residential area that not an in-town area for like a better term, so I'm, I'm not a linguist, but.
Right, right.
You want to maintain some type of privacy.
Typically with buffers.
You said you wanted to maintain it on yours, is.
Right, right.
So bushes, trees, something that, that would give that privacy back and forth, right?
Okay, thanks.
Typically buffers like are usually not hard between two residences. So unless there was something in the deed of restriction that said they needed to maintain a buffer, they would need to maintain it, but otherwise between two residences, it's not typically required to have a buffer.
I understand that, I'm asking you to comply with the, the not, not so much the road, but the development itself and, and I don't know what we're looking for.
To be neighborly.
Yes, yeah, I, I think we're.
Sure, the neighborhood as it is.
Yeah, I think we're comfortable planting to try to maintain a vegetated buffer. I, I just want to be clear that, I mean, there's a lot of scrub trees and things back there, we're not going to plant one on one. But I think we'll do our best to close the gaps.
I'm not talking about thinking.
Okay, as long as we're, as long as we're not talking one for one, I think we're, okay. But maintaining a vegetated buffer and jogging it down.
Right. Trying to, trying to keep the same neighborhood.
Yeah.
Atmosphere or that type, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, you get 10 or five feet, because I'm hearing 10, now I'm hearing five.
Five.
Didn't they just say 10?
Originally Andy said he could do 10. What can you do, Andy? Do the engineering five.
We're within ordinance.
So we got a 50-foot right-of-way and we have a 20-foot.
25.
26-foot road if we count the shoulder, right? Yeah. So we've got.
You've got 12 feet on both sides.
Got 12 feet on both sides from edge of shoulder to right-of-way.
Correct.
So if I move it 10 feet, I'm two feet away from the edge of the right-of-way.
Getting a little close.
Personally, I feel like that's a little close, but if that's something the board's comfortable with.
I'd be good to do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would also like to say that.
It's on the other side, it's what we do.
I think we can.
So five feet, is it right?
Yeah. I think it's more reasonable.
Okay, five feet, that'll give you 17 feet from the edge of the road to the property line.
And maintain all the buffers and possible replant any trees as needed.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Is this going to affect the lawn property? If you're looking at the road, either butter on the other side?
No, it shouldn't affect yours, because they'll still be in the 50-foot right-of-way. The, it, it should not affect your property, because we're only talking about moving the road in the right-of-way. So the right-of-way is not going to expand out and interfere with your property.
The integrity of the neighborhood seems very vague, I know what you're trying to get at, but also if I was trying to respond and I really wanted something, I might promise everything under the sun, but without writing.
It's a condition of.
This wall.
You have to decide what condition of the neighborhood is. Because someone who says the condition of the neighborhood, but also wants to put a road through it.
It's a condition of their ability to get a final or get their permit. So they have to.
It is a condition of approval, and if they violate the condition of approval, they don't get the permits. And they're going to, they're going to want those.
It's not conditional in the sense that you're thinking of the word conditional.
Okay.
They have to perform in order to get their permit, according to the language. That's one of the conditions of their being able to move forward.
So is it drawn up?
Yeah, just like the previous application we just approved. We went through a whole list of conditions of previous approval just five minutes ago. And it probably meant nothing to most people, but it, it was very specific, it's three pages. Took a long time to read through it all, and, and they all have to be met for approval. And, and they have to follow up on it, it, it will be inspected a- after it's built. And if it doesn't follow it, it, they, they.
During the.
During the, 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 the whole process, it, it will be inspected.
Yes, we also have a plot to look at it, to see how it is done. This is not even drawn up.
But Marty, this is only an application, this, this is only a meeting to approve the application. It's not granting a permit for them to move forward.
Still, I'm.
Well, the question is, like what Dan said, if they fulfill the responsibility for A, B, C, and D, okay? And if they do that, it means that the application is complete. Whether you agree with it or not, it still should be approved, because they've met all the conditions. Sorry. It doesn't mean they get the permit, it doesn't mean they build the road. There's a lot of other things that have to take place before that happens. So this is just a very preliminary, you know, one step that we're all taking, so that they can.
In, in this instance, once we have approved this, if we approve this, I should say, the approval then goes to the Board of Selectmen, and they will put it on a warrant for the town meeting. And the entire town will turn out to decide whether or not this road gets discontinued. If the road gets discontinued, Mr. Thomas will be able to go through and implement his plan. If the road does not get discontinued, Mr. Thomas has nothing he can do.
So by voting this evening, doesn't make the process a fait accompli? It's not done, it's merely the first step for them to ultimately get it to the selectmen and get it to town meeting. That's really what it is. So nothing is finalized here tonight by what we vote on.
Oh, thank you for clarifying, sometimes it feels like as non-experts, we have no idea what's going on and we're just hoping that nothing goes wrong. Things are good too, and we have no time to talk about it.
Well, I think you'll have a lot of time during this process in order to express additional views and discuss it further as things develop. So that would be my comment. Rich?
Quick question for you.
Turn the mic, please. Talk loud, Phil. We want the people at home to hear it. I have a concern. If you were the neighbor, what is an adequate buffer to you? Cut the tree, the tall trees down to provide shade for the neighbor? What happens during the winter when the plows come in? I understand, I'd like to talk to Mr. Merrill, have him speak on clearing a hammerhead. I believe a hammerhead's a pain, it's more work compared to a loop where you can just go around, maybe a couple of times pushing. But nobody wants snow on their property. And whatever happened to adverse possession from the town? After so many years of maintaining that road at taxpayer expense, now we're just going to eliminate it? Come on, people, let's make sense. You know, the time for public comment is over.
If you have a question, well.
I kept asking, I kept asking.
I know, because he, he's got a question, we ought to hear it.
We're happy with keeping the road as it is on this plan, if you like.
Any other discussion from the board? Okay. Need a motion. Okay, is there a second? Motion fails. I still need a motion.
Well, we want to move to approve with the conditions that we discussed.
We, we will, yes, we'll, we'll add those conditions on.
So how do you want the motion to sound?
We need a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Well, second then.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve. Findings of fact and conclusions of law, subdivision review, Clearview Estates, section three, amended subdivision. The applicant is proposing to amend the Clearview Estates, section three subdivision by replacing the cul-de-sac on lot 14, identified as Laura Loop with a road and Hammerhead turnaround that would be donated to the town for maintenance as a public way. The town will discontinue the existing public easement over Laura Loop and transfer ownership to the applicant. The original subdivision was approved April 1st, 1981. The applicant currently owns 189 Clearview Drive, identified as lot 14 on the plan, and is seeking this amendment to resolve underlying issues regarding the location and construction of Laura Loop. The board deemed the application complete at the April 15th Planning Board meeting and scheduled a public hearing for May 6th. The board scheduled a site walk for May 6th. Since the last planning board meeting, the applicant has provided the acreage for the property being conveyed to the town and revised the note on the plan of the shaded portion of the Marin lot, stating to be conveyed or retained by the town. Findings of fact, the applicant is Michael Thomas. The owner is the same as the applicant. The location is 189 Clearview Drive. The zoning is urban residential R1 district. The existing land use is a subdivision. The proposed land use is a subdivision amendment. The acreage is 12,850 square feet. The planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in the state subdivision law, Title 30 AMRSA, section 4404, as follows. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. The proposed subdivision will not result in any undue water or air pollution. The proposed subdivision will have sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. Are we allowed to say not applicable? Because a lot of these are not applicable.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, Paul, if you would go through and pick them up and mark them as NA. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water, NA. I'll just say NA, and if any of you disagree with me, we can, we can have the discussion.
Yeah, just say the number.
Uh, number five. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition exists, results. The proposed subdivision amendment will not impact erosion and sedimentation control. The profo- the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions. That's an NA to me. The proposed, number six, the proposed subdivision will, will, will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal, and that's an NA. The, number seven, the proposed subdivision will not have an adverse effect on the scenic. will not have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetic historic sites or significant wildlife habitat. The proposed subdivision amendment will not impact natural beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, or wildlife habitat. Number eight, the proposed subdivision does conform with the town subdivision ordinance. The proposed subdivision complies with the subdivision ordinance, the Arundel subdivision ordinance. Number nine, wherever situated entirely partial, partially within the watershed is an NA. It's not located near any ponds or lakes. Number 10, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. I would say that is also an NA. Number 11, if the subdivision or any part of it is in a flood hazard, that's an NA. Number 12, the proposed all freshwater wetlands, there are none, so that would be NA. Number 13, all farmland within the proposed NA. There's no farmland there. It's a residential area. Number 14, any river stream or brook within or rebutting the proposed subdivision, that's an NA. Number 15, the proposed subdivision will not, the proposed subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management. The proposed subdivision road conveyance will not increase the impervious surface. No changes to stormwater runoff will result from the proposed amendment. Number 16, if any of the lots in the proposed subdivision have shore frontage, that is an NA. Number 17, the long-term cumulative, cumulative effects of the proposed subdivision will not unreasonably increase, that's an NA, great ponds. Number 18, any proposed subdivision that crosses municipal boundaries, NA. 19, timber on the parcel being subdivided has not been harvested in violation of rules adopted pursuant to Title 12, Section 8869, subsection 14. The proposed subdivision does not violate timber harvesting rules. Based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the application of Clearview Estates Section 3 amended subdivision as herein presented with the following conditions of approval. Number one, the applicant will need to have a third-party engineer review the construction of the proposed roadway. The third-party engineer will be contracted by the town of Arundel with Mr. Thomas being responsible for paying the bills. Inspection reports should be provided to the town of Arundel as well as a final as-built plan upon completion of the project. Number two, the center line of the road will be moved five feet to the west? Did we say five or 10? Five feet. Will be moved five feet to the west. And the, the ensuing space on the easterly side will be planted with buffering materials and maintained by Mr. Thomas. Is there anything else?
I would say five feet or more if possible. Plus the buffer.
He's, he just, he's, yeah.
Okay, then five feet in this. I thought there was something wiggle, maybe eight, every foot is.
I, could I just ask for clarity on the buffer? So it's to maintain the existing vegetation to the extent possible and then plant?
Yeah. Supplement what needs to be taken. Okay.
I think there's a third condition, which is that it's subject to the select board's acceptance of the conveyance of the property.
No, that's, that's not something that we would.
This will get you.
Cause it's, this, this will get to the selectmen, which will then get it to the town, to the town.
Okay.
The, the, the town meeting is, is the one. If they say no, it's gone. We might, we might like to tell the selectmen to do certain things, but no.
The selectmen on Thursday night decide that you don't want to put on a warrant. And so to me, this should be conditioned as stated by the chair.
Okay.
Yeah, it's. So I think if I could just clarify, so it's just that if the town isn't going to accept the proposed donation of this area of property, then it wouldn't really make sense to have the approved amendment that would, you know, technically modify the approved subdivision plan. So that's the reason why it should just be the, subject to the select board's acceptance of the conveyance of the property. Um, I don't think there's anything that needs to be done with respect to the warrant. It would really just be the select board's acceptance of the donation of the property to the town. Cause like the, like it's stated, if it's not going to be accepted, then there's no.
Usually the conditions are that we, we, it's, it's requiring the applicant to perform something. In this case, the condition is fallen on the town.
Well, it's.
Well, it won't hurt to have it, have it on there.
Yeah, it's not.
If I'm gonna put something on here that tells the selectmen to do something, I, I want something on here that says the selectmen have to send it to the town meeting.
So it's, it's not that we're trying to compel the select board.
You can do that.
Why not?
I know.
I'm not sure I, we, we can put anything on there, but why can't I tell them?
So it's, it's, it's really, I think it's, I think it's helpful if you kind of divorce the fact that it's the select board. It's really the same thing as saying like the third-party engineer. The third-party engineer doesn't approve it, or it can't be done in the way that it's been approved. Then the approval basically becomes no.
But I don't, I don't think, I, I honestly do not think we have the right to, to, to condition anything on acceptance by the selectman.
So it's.
Good question. If the selectmen decide not to put this on a warrant.
They're gonna have, they're gonna have our approval tonight. And if.
But they can't do it, they can't do it because part of this is, is, is if you're clearing a road.
Right.
You know, I.
It, it, it's the discontinuation of the road and. That's correct, and this fails.
So I just want to draw the.
Maybe I can clarify this.
Okay.
How about if we just say as a condition of approval, it's subject to the select board approval? Let them go figure out whether they can do it or they have to put it on a town warrant. Just gives them the heads up that they can't go start the project until they finish the process.
Change the words, play their approval town meeting, because that's what doesn't happen.
So I mean, the, the select board doesn't have the authority. I mean, sorry, the planning board doesn't have the authority to direct that something be put on a town meeting warrant. The, the purpose here is to say that if the select board isn't going to accept this conveyance, then there's no real value in having the amended plan. So it's not as though you're requiring the select board to do anything or saying that the select board must do this. It's just providing some protection against having this approval in place, whether or not the proposed conveyance of the property ever becomes possible. So if the conveyance of the property isn't going to become possible to the town because the select board denies it, then the approval will just sit there, and that wouldn't be ideal for anybody. So the goal is just to make it so that you condition the approval on the select board's acceptance of the property, not with respect to the road or anything else, but just the conveyance of the property.
Subject to select board approval, let them go figure out what the legal way is for them to go do it. That's not up to us. We're just telling him he's gotta get that approval before he can do it. As a condition of approval.
Okay, right.
Approval by this.
But if they don't approve it and decide not to put it on town meeting, it becomes moot.
Bad issue.
So it doesn't, then it doesn't matter if it goes to town meeting.
So I'll, I'll ask our great wordsmith, how would you word that, Paul?
Uh, one of the conditions of approval would be subject to select board approval.
Okay.
Period.
Item number three would be subject to select board approval.
Could we add? Could we add?
We cannot tell them to put this on the town meeting. We don't have that authority. They, and they alone, the select board and the select board alone have the authority to put it on the town meeting. We cannot tell them to do that. That is outside our purview. Cause again, if we can tell the select board to do stuff, I can think of great things.
You're dealing with conveyance of property and road. That's, has to fall under the jurisdiction of the select. Period.
Thank you, thank you, Susan.
But that's what I'm saying. We do not have the authority to tell them to, to forward it.
To an approval of a warrant being sent to town meeting to approve the road.
No, no, I can't, but I cannot tell them to put it on a town. Because the selectmen.
Right, right.
Right.
Right. We're telling them they can't move forward until they get that approved.
Right.
That's what the.
But the condition. The condition.
They approve the conveyance of that little piece of property. And if they don't approve the conveyance of that little piece of property, the subject is moot. And it doesn't go to town meeting because it's dead in the water.
If they agree that it's a good idea and they want to put it on a town warrant, then it goes to.
Then it goes to town meeting. But if they don't convey that little piece of property, it, it doesn't have to go to town meeting.
What was the council recommendation for this state?
So my recommended condition was that the approval be subject to the select board's acceptance of the conveyance of the property. So under the town meeting warrant articles that the town has passed for as far back as I could find, the select board's given the authority to accept property donated to the town for public use. It, it's not something that needs to go to the town meeting, but again, the discontinuance of the road and those elements would need to go to town meeting. So there's additional opportunity for public hearing, additional opportunity for everything else. But with respect to the property and the severance of this portion from the lot and conveyance to the town, that just goes to the select board for the select board's action. So that's why I was suggesting the condition be the select board's acceptance of the proposed conveyance.
Okay. So number, number, number three would be. Number, number three would be the select board's acceptance of the conveyance of the, of the property. If I understand what you've said correctly.
It's acceptable.
Okay.
Sam, you got it all? Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty.
Questions with the selectmen? Uh, does anyone miss that who signed it up or any of the selectmen still around? Or is it all different to board? Back into the, when this all never got done?
I don't know, I have no idea.
Phil, were you on a board in 81? Was you on a board in 81?
No. Yeah, it's, it's irrelevant.
And we have other people, we have other matters.
All right. Hold the vote. Okay. All those in favor? All right. Any opposed? Or in favor, one opposed.
Thank you very much.
We will have the findings of fact and, and conclusions of law ready. Hopefully, we can get them printed out tomorrow and get them signed so that they'll.
And then we'll get you the revised plan showing the five-foot dog as soon as we can, and it'll have this.
As soon as you get it into Ann, she'll let us know when we're going inside it. Okay, next item on the agenda. Okay.
Hey, guys. We.
Folks.
We still have work to do. Please, can you take the discussion outside?
Okay, next, next item on the agenda is the Skilling Woods subdivision. Subdivision amendment, a proposal to amend Skilling Woods subdivision to construct a 624 private way and create two new lots located on tax map 10, Lot 10 on Laurel Lane. Rene Turgeon is the owner applicant. Paul Gadboy PE is the project engineer. And Paul, after, after having waited a while and, and waited a while, thank you for, for requesting the extension that you gave us. I should bring you all up to, up to stuff with what the town attorney said. She couldn't believe we were asking the questions. Why didn't we just look at it and say, really? It's, it's, it's an irrelevant point. It's not adding in additional, we're not adding another 26 units on to, to South Skilling subdivision. Yeah, you did.
Yes, you did.
So we're, we're going to proceed along. And unfortunately, the person who wanted the question answered is not here. No, no, a member of the public. Well, there's no question, it's fortunate.
Welcome back. Well, you asked me if I had any comments about it, and I didn't have any, I had comments, but you guys already decided and already tried the public hearing. Already agreed to send it, review by attorney, so I wasn't going to try to play attorney. Um, so, um, we're back in front of the board. The only change to the plan is something that James asked for. He wanted this portion of the right of, of the access easement. So there's a note saying very portion of access strip to the edge of the post, fifty foot right away to Anthony Davis. So she'll own this second right of, even though that didn't put access, gave her access to it. It does make it a little bit clean, so. I had that note that we're gonna, I already wrote the description, so we're gonna let them convey in that, to Anthony, his daughter. That's the only change I made to the plan set. That you have, that you see.
Does the board have any questions? We've already had the public hearing.
No, I think we should move right along.
I think we should move right along too.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion, we approve the application.
Okay. Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve the application. Findings of fact and conditions of law subdivision review for the Skilling Woods amended subdivision Laurel Lane. The applicant is proposing to amend the existing Skilling Woods subdivision located off Laurel Lane. The proposed amendment involves splitting the remaining land in two lots and creating Tyler's Way to provide frontage for the new lots and access to the remaining 58 acres of land. The original subdivision was approved March 28th, 1988. At the planning board meeting on March 4th, 2025, the board deemed the application complete and scheduled a site walk and public hearing for March 18th, 2025. The board and the applicant agreed to a 90-day extension of the application decision as a result of attorney's review of private ways standards. The application will be discussed at the May 6th planning board meeting. Applicant Rene Turgeon, owner same as the applicant, location Laurel Lane. Zoning suburban residential R2 and shoreline resource protection RP. Existing land use is a subdivision, proposed land use is a subdivision. Acreage is 50,200 square feet out of 60 acres. Acreage is fifty thousand two hundred square feet out of sixty acres. The planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in the state subdivision law, law Title Thirty dash AMRSA Section four oh four as follows. Uh, the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. The proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. Number two, the proposed subdivision will not have sufficient water, will have sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. The applicant coordinated with the fire chief on water availability needs. The proposed house lot in the subdivision will include sprinklers to meet fire protection requirements. No other methods of fire suppression are proposed. Number three, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unbearable burden on existing water supply if one is to be used. These proposed subdivision will not burden the existing water supply. The proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results. The proposed subdivision will provide for adequate soil and erosion control and intends to abide by the main erosion and sediment control best management practices under DEP. Number five, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public, not applicable. Uh, number six, the proposed subdivision will not, will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal. The applicant has provided soil tests for sub-water surface disposal. The proposed subdivision will have adequate sewage waste disposal. Number seven, the proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, and natural wildlife habitat. The proposed subdivision will not impact scenic or natural areas. Number eight, the proposed subdivision does conform with the town subdivision ordinance. Number nine, wherever situated entirely or partial, partially within the watershed of any pond. I believe that is an NA. You're not close to any watersheds or ponds, are you? Number ten, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. The proposed subdivision will not impact groundwater quality or quantity. If the subdivision is in a flood hazard, that is NA. All freshwater wetlands is NA. All farmland is NA.
No, the wetlands isn't, because he ended up having to get a permit, BP and all that stuff, so.
Really?
So then we.
I don't remember. Okay, I'm sorry, I, I don't remember the wetland.
Yeah, no, the wetlands, he had to go across it and he paid his permit and. Wetlands apply.
Oh, yeah, it does. It's, all freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified.
Yep.
A wetland delineation and Vernal Pool survey report was conducted by Copy and Fire Metal LLC, May twenty-second two thousand twenty-four. The location of wetlands is shown on the subdivision plan. The applicant intends to fill approximately forty-five hundred square feet of wetlands for the construction of Tyler's Way and has been approved by a DEP, NRPA Tier One permit and US Army Corps general permit. All farmland within the proposed subdivision is NA. There's no farmland in there. Any river stream or brook within or abutting the proposed subdivision has been identified on any map submitted as part of the application. No river streams or brooks but the proposed subdivision. Number fifteen, the proposed subdivision will not provide, will provide for adequate stormwater management. Existing drainage flows to, toward the designated drainage area. The addition of the private way will add approximately seventeen thousand five.